Hi, guys. How you doing? This is the quietest council meeting I've ever been to. Hi, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Todd Beck from the Towns Chief Administration of Officer, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to call the 2021 organizational meeting of council order. I'd like to call upon the Town's legislative coordinator Vanessa Connors to call, sorry, to bring Mayor Barclay up for, sorry, please.
Right hand, left hand on the Bible. Hi, Jean Barclay.
Hi, Jean Barclay.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God. All right, well, we will keep going and swear in the counselors now, so I'd like to call up Jason Heistad, please. Hi, Jason Heistad.
Hi, Jason Heistad.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
That I will diligently faithfully in the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of counselor.
The office of counselor.
For the town of Innisfail.
For the town of Innisfail.
Help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Don Harrison, next, please.
Hi, Don Harrison.
Hi, Don Harrison.
Do swear that I will diligently.
That I swear I will diligently.
Faithfully into the best of my ability.
Faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute, execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of counselor.
The office of counselor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
Thank you, Don.
And Cindy Messeris, please.
Hi, Cindy Messeris.
Hi, Cindy Messeris.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of counselor.
The office of counselor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
And Dale Dunham, please.
Hi, Dale Dunham.
Hi, Dale Dunham.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of counselor.
The office of counselor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
Thank you, Dale. Keep the pen. Present.
Hey, hi, Janice Wing.
Janice Wing.
Do swear that I will diligently.
Do swear that I will diligently.
Faithfully into the best of my ability.
Faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of counselor.
The office of counselor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
Hi, Gavin Bates.
Hi, Gavin Bates.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of counselor.
The office of counselor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone, family and friends who came today. And I'd also like to mention a special young lady that came this afternoon, Taylor. I met Taylor at the domestic violence event at the beginning of October, and we walked downtown and got to know Taylor a little bit. She's very keen on politics and government, and I know someday she'll be sitting in these chairs here, so Taylor, if you just want to give us a wave and show us who you are back there, so thank you. So we will get the rest of this meeting underway then. So with respect to the agenda, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Could I please have someone move? The agenda?
I so move your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. And then we'll move on to 4.1, which is the deputy mayor rotation. So everyone has on their desks a list of the deputy mayor. There is an amendment to it. We have taken November to February 2024 to 2025, we've inserted Counselor Dunham and taken out Counselor Harrison, just to make the rotation equal for everybody, so everybody has two turns of this. So if everyone is okay with that, I will have somebody move that deputy mayor rotation, and then we will swear in Counselor Harrison as a deputy mayor.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Heistad. So, Don, I will, we'll go Counselor Harrison, we'll go back up to the frontier again and do that, okay?
Just votes on the motions.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course. Sorry, new at this, yes, yes, all in favor. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back up Counselor Harrison and do the swearing in up there, okay? Okay. Hi, Don Harrison.
Hi, Don Harrison.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
That I will diligently faithfully into the best of my ability.
Execute according to law.
Execute according to law.
The office of deputy mayor.
The office of deputy mayor.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
For the town of Innisfail, so help me God.
Thank you. Okay, so item number 4.2, council member appointments to the boards and the committees. Everybody would like to review those, so we have them all in front of us. Thank you, Cara, for getting this done today. So, of course, as per usual, there was a lot of people that wanted certain committees and other people or other committees that nobody wanted them, so we we had to adjust a little bit accordingly, so I hope it's all right with everybody. We've tried to keep it quite even. So people have kind of the same workload throughout the first couple of years. So if you have any objections to any of this, please let us know and we can make changes. And if not, I will ask somebody to make a motion that we approve the appointments.
Mayor Barclay, I make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wing. All in favor? Pass, thank you. So just pass it over to CEO Becker for item number 5.1.
So Mayor Barclay and Council, typically when we appoint members at large to your committees, we'd often go in camera, that's what the agenda reads. You do have a great delegation or a great gallery watching you, it'd be shameful, but I'm just wondering if it'd be possible to try to work through the committee appointments without achieving in camera, but I noticed in your package that there's only one committee that's requiring a vote. But I'd ask for you to, if you could just maybe walk through, just nice and lightly through the try to avoid going in camera, and just see if we can walk through the appointments and anytime, Mayor Barclay, if there's a need to go in camera, we can certainly go in camera, but just to see if we can tip toe to the appointments and see how that goes for you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So CEO Becker, are you going to?
Yeah, I, actually, my legislative coordinator was. There she comes.
Didn't see her back there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, your worship. So you have the applications ahead of time to review. And we're looking for five separate motions to appoint one citizen to the transportation committee for a three-year term, two citizens to the municipal planning commission for a two-year term, four citizens to the subdivision and development board for a two-year term, four citizens to the FCSS advisory board for two years, and one citizen to the policing committee for a two-year term. So the transportation committee had one vacancy and received one application. And it was Danny Reberger.
The best if we just make the motion as we go. Yeah, otherwise it'd be kind of confusing, so could somebody please make a motion that we accept Danny Reberger to the transportation committee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Bates, all in favor.
Okay, the municipal planning commission had two vacancies and we have two applications, Bron King and Patty Urban.
Okay, so I'll ask somebody to make a motion, please, that we accept Ron King and Patty Urban to municipal planning commission.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dunham, all in favor? Yes, thank you.
I'll save the subdivision and development appeal board for the last one with the vote. Family and community support services advisory board, four vacancies and four applicants, Ella Breck, Erin Callingwood, Ron King, and Kathy McDonald.
Okay, I will ask somebody to make a motion that we accept those four people to the community services standing committee.
I would make that motion, Mayor Barclay.
Thank you, Counselor Wing, all in favor? Pass, thank you.
Policing and Safe Community Committee. You've had, oh, sorry, this is the one you have to vote on.
I do have a question, Mayor Barclay, just Vanessa, just on the policing and community safety committee. I see the report indicates we have, for one, position, which means that the balance of the members are, remain on the committee?
Policing Committee?
Yeah.
They all expired at the same time, the members.
So we're looking more, more than just one member?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, typo in the motion, should be five citizens. Thank you.
So with that Vanessa, three, Mayor Barclay, so we have five positions and how many applications?
Six. Hand out five pieces of paper to vote now, each one.
Mayor Barclay, just for clarity on to, just to help us, the folks that are watching the meeting. Just how this works is that the town advertises, advertises to the community, members at large, applications. Council within our package has all the applications, and we don't reveal that publicly, just do the sensitivity to freedom of information. But council can review and appoint based on the applications that they receive.
Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, your worship, but could we have Vanessa maybe just review the six candidates?
What I'd, sorry. Oh. Mayor Barclay, the Counselor Harrison, I think what I understand, we did not provide all the level of detail of the applications within your package. In all fairness to the applications, it would be best to review the applications prior to council appointing those members to that committee. What I'd suggest to you, counsel, is probably the best way to do this is to proceed on appointing those that are in the package. While council meets during the regular council meeting, I think we should delay adjournments of your organizational meeting, we'll come back to you with the full detail later part of your agenda today. As we can conclude that process and advance our committee appointments and orientation process.
Okay, thank you.
So Vanessa, we've done all we can do then, right now? Right, correct, okay.
Subdivision Appeal Board. Yeah.
So for the subdivision and appeal board, the one applicant was actually appointed to the municipal planning commission, so they're not eligible, Patty Urban. So that leaves the four applicants, Joyce Boone, Gail Shipil, Dawn Morrow, and Danny Reberger for the four vacancies.
So we will have a motion to accept those, please.
I'll move that we accept the four that were just listed.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bates, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa. So do you want to adjourn this meeting, Todd? And we'll come back to it later, or?
I believe.
Add an agenda.
It's a little messy.
It is.
But I asked for recess of the organizational meeting, we'll come back and finish your business, and then you can adjourn there. So make a motion, please, to recess the organizational meeting.
Okay.
I'd so move your worship to recess.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison, all in favor? Thank you. So just so everybody knows that we're now going to go into our regular council meeting, so if people want to leave, by all means, I know many of you came here, just watch the swearing in, so you know, you can, you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go, whatever suits. Okay, see, everybody's leaving. I gave you a note. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, so we will call to order our regular council meeting for October 25th. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Could I please have someone adopt the agenda?
I'd so move your worship that we adopt the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harrison, are all in favor? And we'll just review the minutes of the last meeting, of course, there's only three of us here that would have known what was going on in that meeting, but somebody could please move that we adopt those minutes.
I'll move the minutes, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Bates, all in favor? So moving into item 4.1, request for decision on the, we'll have CEO Becker give his report to us, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barclay, I'm really proud to have you folks and being sworn in as council, even just being sworn in as his legacy, his history for the town of Innisfail, I should be very proud. Administratively, we're very proud to be supporting you in your your four, four years of some, 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 a lot of fun, I would imagine. And some, and some tough work, as it goes with the territory, so it's my privilege to be your CEO as well. With my very first CEO report to you, counsel. Just to go through a few things, I might even add a little bit to some of these discussion items, just maybe more of a educational component, so every regular council meeting, I provide you a CEO reports. I provide you really what's going on in the, in the world of the CEO, but I also add in other business that's pertinent for you to understand, updates. You have all right to ask me any questions as you feel necessary, based on the report or anything else regarding administration operations, so this is a time, you can ask me anything you want for updates or anything else, but this specific CEO reports, I'm just, I want to update you on a little bit of information regarding the council chambers. As you notice, we have one of our TVs is down, we have a technical issue on the big screen. That, that unit is being fixed, replaced here shortly, or not replacement, fixed. We don't, also have some glitches on our IT system. And then we go in panic mode when, when we're serving you, and we have people virtually watching and engaging. But we're working on that and trying to streamline that, any budgetary costs, we're going to come back to you during the 2022 budgets deliberations. But we're trying to just nail it down a little bit tighter on when technical issues happen, and we know they occur that we're better suited to, to perhaps taking a adjournment or a a break to resolve technical issues, so they do happen, but we'll try to mitigate as best we can. As you know, several of the town staff have been very busy with the municipal election, we know that has come and gone, that's for all your hard work. And now we can move forward on that chapter and, and look at other priorities. I just, I wanted to let you know of a current community engagement program that previous council approved. So we will be doing a lot of this, it's bridging over from previous council to new council, one of the items that we're, we're working on is through the recommendation of the Community Economic Development Advisory Group recommended onto council to proceed with a business retention and expansion engagement program, which we initiated through volunteers and some staff to the town and chamber last week, and it's started off and it's going very well, I think a little bit more work to do in that area. That will follow with a more inclusive public engagement process to demonstrate the results. That committee is slated to meet next Thursday, I believe, the 4th to, to have an update on that process. Some of the key primary focus areas of myself, the CEO over the last reporting period, including such things as the council onboarding orientation process, which you endured through on Thursday. Development inquiries, so it's some, some discussions with developers. Emergency Coordination Center, the ECC objectives, which we're going to talk about shortly. And Health and Safety Core audit preparation, which is going to occur here in November. It's an annual process that tests our safety program at a given moment of time, so I will reveal the results to you once those results have been calculated. And the new employee performance evaluation system are all out, so husband councils, strategic, previous council's strategic priorities was to work on enhancing our HR program. So we did, received some support in building our foundation, but we rolled out a new performance evaluation system to staff more based on, on attributes or tactics. So it's, it's a, is a good system, and we do it all with one time during the year, not traditionally on on the anniversary dates of each employee, so we're doing that over the next few weeks. And yeah, so it's a, it's a really good process. As you can see in the RFD, the request for decisions, which is what this report is, staff will implement necessary information to understand the impact of such things as the budget. For example, financial impacts of the council chambers IT could perhaps be an effect on budgets. So anything that we find that we could recommend to enhance our technical abilities in the chambers will be presented during the 2022 budget deliberations. I just want to report out unofficially, it should come by more through Erica, but in our budget of 2021, the, the election was expanded cost of $25,000, that some of that cost was actually offset by some of the provincial funding provided to that, all municipalities in Alberta, to assist providing those extra questions on the ballot, so Erica, you called that, that extra revenue that we, we received for that?
It was around $15,000.
So let's go, there's some savings on our budget due to that, the coordination that Erica and company assisted with. I'm just moving down into, we also tried to show you the alignment to our scrap plan, so the current scrap plan still exists until till you update the plan slated in February 2022. But we just want to make sure that the work we're doing aligns to what the expectations are. Everything that we do should tie into a level of scrap plan. If not, then we, then we need just maybe question, does it align up with your focus as council? So really, that's a extra winded CEO report, just a little bit more detail for you, counsel. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Does anyone have any questions for CEO Becker? If not, I would ask someone approve the CEO report dated October 25th as information.
I move.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Messeris, all in favor? Thank you. And then next, we have the 4.3, so our CEO will give an emergency coordination center update.
I wonder if, because we already just made back up to the action control.
Yes, sorry, yes, action control first.
See how much of a pain I can be. This is important item, Mayor Council, every motion you make that has real action, not your Germans and so forth. But any motion you make directing administration will go on to this action control. It's a, it's a way to measure. Just action. So we, we log it. So red means it comes off. So you make, so if it's black, it's still outstanding item. So I think we'll go a little bit detail on these action items. I might ask administration to help me with some of the dialogue. So again, every time you make a motion, give direct to administration. We, we allocate, put it on there and we look at this every council meeting. And if you haven't want an update on this, any action item, you can certainly pose this questions at this part of the agenda. So back in 2018, and I don't put this to Megan, she hasn't, I started with this. So Megan's not slow with his action. I'm just having fun with this. But back in 2018, council made a motion to direct administration through the ad hoc of the transportation committee to explore sponsorship opportunities for the wheelchair. Minivan. So, so then with what has done now is through Megan and the transportation committee, they've been working on achieving this action. And, and so maybe I'll just have you make and just explain where we're at with this action and, and what's coming at us.
Sure. So we've been working with the transportation committee to, I guess, big part of it is to determine what we wanted in a van in terms of what would serve the most need. And essentially been working through that process, coming to a, a conclusion with a smaller van than the current pace bus van. The smaller van still being wheelchair accessible and being able to support largely individuals having to leave the community for various reasons. Primarily medical appointments, those sorts of things where we end up with the pace bus doing those trips right now, which ends up with us not having the pace bus in the community for, for hours at a time. So that's, that's where the committee has got to in terms of the need. We've been working with a company called Move Mobility that does the, the retrofits to the vehicles. And we do have, we have it identified in the budget now as the, the specs for this van. It's about an $80,000 capital investment. Through administration and the transportation committee, we have received a $20,000 grant through the U of A's medically assisted rural drivers. Medically at risk drivers program, that's what it's called. So we do have that money. We've also had preliminary contact with the county as well as the Lions Club in terms of sponsorship for this vehicle. So we do think there's significant potential to reduce that capital investment on behalf of the town. I do have an invitation to offer to all of council for this Friday at 9:00 AM. That Move Mobility will have a vehicle very similar to what we would be looking to procure in the community. If you want to come and have a look at it. But yes, we will be coming back to council with this vehicle as part of our capital budget options.
Good. Thanks, Megan. Is there any questions as per this action item?
Your worship through to Megan, where on Friday at nine o'clock here at the office? Thank you.
Great. So just moving on.
I do have one other question. Do we have an idea too, what the operating cost may be for next year's budget? Or is some of that granted?
We do have it in, in the budget information. The estimate is an increase of about 22,000 from the Legion in terms of the operating costs. But we'll talk a little bit more about that because our, our funding has kind of gone back and forth with the Legion. So it, it kind of levels out actually. So we'll give you some more detail in a couple of weeks.
And just moving on, on the action controls, development partnership exploration. So I'll just say, and maybe I'll put back to you, Megan, the town was approached by Hazelwood Estates, Mason Martin Homes to, to consider exploring partnership agreements with, with Hazelwood Developments. So council, we did talk to council, council did make a motion as per the action control to continue talking with, with Mason Martin of Hazelwood Estates. What a partnership agreement would look like. As you can see on the action control that we were slated Novemberish to deliver back to council, but has been delayed to January 22. And Megan, do you have anything to add?
Um, I guess just that the, the scope of some of that exploration has sort of expanded beyond just, just the Hazelwood Estates option. So we will come back, yeah, early in the year with not only that path, but also some other approaches for how the town could be a player in, in that land development process.
Any further questions, council? Okay, just on the next item, special tax by law for 37th Street in 2022. So just a little bit of history. So council part of their 2020 projects, capital projects, developed 61st Avenue. Pavements, road rehab project in industrial park. Council through deliberation and seeing some data from administration ultimately decided to allocate 15% of the paving costs of 61st back to those that are directly impacted by that project. So, so it's called a couple of ways, there's called special tax. We talked about this briefly on Monday, but special tax can be applied at, at the will of council to, to apply a special tax. And what happens is a calculation is based on frontage. It's calculated through engineering finance. And people, those that are affected are, there's communication with them. And they may agree with it, they may disagree with it, but ultimately it's up to council to determine if a special tax would be applied. So that's right now, it's a 15 year tax, but it has to be approved if council desires to every year. So you're going to see a special tax by law for 61st come back to you in the spring of April of 2022. So the same logic is for the 37th Street project that was just basically concluded. It's probably about 90, 95% complete payment is down in, in 37th Street. So council, in review of this project, said same thing for 37th as for 61st. So administration will bring back to you a, a special tax by law for your review and consideration in, in April of 2022. So that'll stay there until that, that given time, or unless you say take it off. So the red comes off or some amendments to the land use by law as, as per Megan's work in, in those action items. The bottom two is what we talked about briefly. To council approve the Community Economic Development Advisory Group recommendation to proceed with the business retention expansion program. And then led into council proven the recommendation of the same group to initiate the economic development engagement plan. So those are in motion, motion, they are being organized and being implemented as we speak. So moral, you'll hear more about those, those that were being done. So 2021 for this franchise fee rider, so last council meeting, administration presented to council, the, to, to consider. Well, I'll just say council ultimately decided to, but I made a couple of motions. One is to maintain. It's actually to maintain 70%, not to increase. So I think our wording is not quite right on, on that motion. So we'll double check that, but council decided not to increase the franchise fees as to maintain 70%. So council, they gave direction to a contact with both Fortis and Atco. Stadium, we, we disapprove of your application of the franchise fee agreements or fees to be implemented by November 1st. When council is just basically starting and we have not gotten to budget yet. So I have not heard back from Atco, but I heard back from Fortis and they, they're, they're good for council to, to review and provide indication of the franchise fees towards the spring. And it's not, love to take credits for that, but basically they allow this, but they do not really promote it highly to municipalities that to extend the timelines. So it's. So yeah, so it's certainly a little bit of misinformation, miscommunication, but what I'll do, Mayor Council, come back to you at the next meeting with full disclosure. And ask for consideration to review the franchise fees agreement or agreements as part of your budget deliberations. So right now, your direction was clear. Previous council was to maintain the current franchise fees riders as they, as are stated. But administration will come back to you and say, this is what we learned. We recommend you take another look at the franchise fees as part of your 2022 budget deliberations. So, so that'll come back to you in the near future, but I'll certainly take any questions regarding that piece of information.
Does anyone have any questions?
Again, the last two are some amendments to land use by law. And, and that was part of a, there's a extensive process for engaging the public. Public hearings are part of both of those amendments and they've now been concluded through third and final reading. And that's the action control, Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, thank you, CEO Becker. I will have someone make a motion, please, that we accept this for information.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Highstat, all in favor? Pass, thank you. Now we will get into the 4.3, the emergency coordination center update, and we'll start with CEO Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Barclay. So just add on to a little bit. So emergency coordination center ECC, we call it, we've been updating council really every meeting. We took a little break when things were stabilized for a while, but the ECC is administrative process that we meet here regularly, once a week, usually on Wednesdays to talk about really largely COVID and what's, what how it's impacting our community, our facilities, et cetera. You'll hear the term ECC or emergency coordination center during emergency, emergency management training. It's what is pulled together if we have a, a matter in our community, an urgent matter or emergency. Through myself and Gary, we've called ECC together to start figuring out our emergency and start allocating resources accordingly. So ECC is a very important entity made up of administration, reporting onto council. But if we have an emergency in our community, we pull this group together to figure out what is going on. The ECC has objectives and I didn't put them on the agenda, but we have three main objectives that we work towards. They include maintain critical and high priority service levels. So on the onset of COVID, back in March, April of 2020, when really things are going haywire. We met at ECC and we developed objectives. They were three, these three main objectives with sub actions underneath them. But council at the time, and just to how sensitive COVID was and the impacts potentially on our community and really what they have impacted our community. We had to relook at our services. We do that through a pandemic continuity plan. There's a full document we developed that outlines all our services that we have. And do we need to change our services to accommodate COVID? So we had to accommodate the change of our rec facilities because we basically shut them down at that given time. We were worried about the, our financial condition of what, what is happening to our community. Our people are able to pay taxes, water bills. So what we did through council direction is we altered our services. We, we didn't do painting of our lines. We, we cut back on our mowings. We're trying to save as many dollars as we could to mitigate potential financial risk. At the end of that, we determined we did a really good job. The community did a really good job. People, we had as high tax payments as we ever have. We did a tax sort of utility, the furl payment tax too. So we had some deferrals, but, but they're managed really well by the community. So council, following all this, said in the 2021 budget, it's go back to traditional services. We're good. But that's all part of this ECC on to administration, on to council, how this all works. Our second objective to support employees, that is crucial for us. So we do check-ins. We've had the odd case, but we've done, done really well. So biggest thing right now is monitoring mental health and making sure those programs are, are communicated out and make sure employees have the proper supports they need to, just to be healthy in the workplace and on to their, on to their home life. Because they, they definitely blend home and work. And the third objective is public safety. And again, working with RCMP, awareness of the federal provincial business support programs. And et cetera. But so a little bit long-winded on that, but we had, do have a plan, we work within a plan. But each council meeting, we talk about ECC. So we'll get more now into the, into the details. So before I put it over to Megan, what's going on, on, on the recreation side? So we met says ECC last week and we continue to meet weekly. Currently, just, just quickly, currently reviewing, researching vaccination policies. I know municipalities are starting to have an uptake on a mandatory staff vaccination policies. Just doing some research on that right now, but I don't have a recommendation or an action associated more understanding what, what that means, what it could mean for, for our employees. So no, nothing to report further than that. I can state that we had a really high compliance with the COVID protocols during the election. You know, we had the odd straggler not wearing the mask, but all in all, we did, we did quite well with, with compliance. And lastly, with that council, just reviewing administrative policies associated with, with the COVID directives of our staff. That's my report. Megan, I know you have a few things to add in.
Sure. I just wanted to provide counsel and update on the work we've been doing with respect to COVID-19 protocols at town facilities. We're continuing to evaluate our options, particularly at the arena, to find ways to safely allow the widest range of users at the facility. This does include consideration of the implementation of the restrictions exemption program as a means to facilitate adult gameplays, most specifically the men's Eagles hockey team. So since the beginning, when the, the vaccine restrictions exemption program came in, we have been open with groups that, that we may come to a point where we have to move to the, to the REP program. In just last week, in having conversations with Inisville Minor Hockey and the skating club, we've had mixed feedback from those groups with concerns about coaches and volunteers. And also that there may be individuals that seek refunds if we do go to that, that way of operating. We are waiting a formal response from both of their boards, which are meeting this week. Staff is also assembling cost estimates for security and additional staff if we do move towards that REP program. As with most COVID related responses, we're, we're working on it with continued interaction with AHS to try to find the best solution to be able to accommodate, accommodate those games for the, for the adult users without having a negative impact on our youth, youth user groups. So yeah, so just a, just an update, if there's any questions there, things that the, the pool are continuing to operate as we have been under that restrictions exemption program. And we are also exploring some options at the, at the LLC in terms of what types of bookings we can accommodate in the community room.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any questions? Councilor Harrison?
Thank you, your worship through to Director Jenkins. You mentioned that you're waiting for feedback from the user groups this week?
Yes. So we have had some conversation back and forth, but they're going to be taking the information to their boards and giving us something sort of formal responses.
Can you share with us who those user groups are?
Um, so primarily Inisville Minor Hockey, the Inisville Skating Club, and then Thrive Hockey is our other youth group that, that is a regular booker at the arena. youth group that, that is a regular booker at the arena.
Can you refresh my memory then? What about spectators? I want to go watch my granddaughter figure skate. What would be the restriction?
So currently the, the arena is not operating under the restrictions exemption program. So we're operating under the, the capacity limitations. So right now there's no requirement for proof of vaccination to go into the arena for a spectator or or anyone else, I guess. But we are limited to one-third capacity. Everyone has to be masked regardless, physical distancing, those types of components. So if we move to the R E P program, then those spectators would be required to be screened to go in as a spectator or a volunteer or a coach.
So the, just one final question, your worship. So if we move to the R E P, that's to help or to allow adults to participate. So.
Correct.
But, okay, so any adult programming, we need to look at the R E P.
The R E P. So we're trying to look at some options because at this point the, the Eagles home game schedule is, is eight home games. So whether we can come up with, with a solution where we're able to implement to cover off those games without having to across the board apply the R E P. So we're, we're working on it, but the first Eagles home game isn't planned until the first weekend in December. So.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? So Director Jenkins, I thought that like the, some example, the Eagles can operate under the R E P, but the spectators we can reduce to a third capacity.
It's, it's tough.
Okay.
And you can go through this document even with the. If they're doing a private event, the, the individual renter can say, I'm going to do R E P and come in and, and do that, which is how we're operating for say men's, men's rec league. They are all required to, to be vaccinated, the, the participants. But that's not a situation where you're having spectators coming in and, and watching. Even the Eagles are, are currently practicing, but again, there's not, not spectators. It's this move to the, to the game component where you're having adult physical activity in combination with that public.
So what are some of the other places doing? Like I, I understood that it was kind of a mixed model where hockey was the hockey league, whoever it might be was R E P, yet spectators were not, or is that just?
It's very.
Being so confusing that we don't know. Yeah.
It is very mixed and, and everyone is sort of.
Trying to figure it out.
Figuring it out to the, to the best that they can. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your work on this. I know it's not easy for sure.
Your worship.
Yeah, your Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, your worship, again through to Director Jenkins. Once we get all this sorted out and sort of a plan going forward, will you be doing a communicate to the public and in very simple terms?
Yeah. And that was what we did at the pool as well. We sort of sent out something that was very specific to, you know, lane swimming. This is how it works, public swimming, how each of those different events will be, will be impacted. So.
I feel that's very important because there's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of different things. And if we can get one sort of consistent message that's simple for, for the public, I think it'll help all of us when we, when we're questioned. Thank you, Director.
Okay, there's no further questions. I'd ask somebody, make a motion, please, that we accept the ECC update as information.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Highstead, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to four point four, council procedure by law, the CEO Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Barclay, and bear with me. It's a very important bylaw and I know policies can be a little, little tough to get through, but this one is really how you do your business in the chamber. So I thought it's really important that we work through it. So as for the bylaw, council procedure by law is to establish rules to follow and governing the meetings of council and committees of the town. So this affects you here with council and council committees, but also the committees, your core committees as well. So this procedure by law guides your committees as well as council. So there is a list of definitions for you, chairs being the mayor or the deputy mayor in the absence of the mayor. E committee of the whole, different municipalities use committee of the whole differently. Some refer committee of the whole as in camera, but committee of the whole, we don't, we seldom use that term here. But we use it as a, as a committee, AMP basically. So, so you'll maybe talk to another council somewhere. Committee of the whole, they may refer to as in camera, but we don't. Just working through J ex officio. So there could be alternate members that attends your committees, but also the mayor is ex officio on all, all committees of council. In camera means going, it's non-public. According to the Freedom of Information Privacy Act. So you have the right to do that anytime in a meeting that you deemed appropriate as according to legislation. So that's just a few, few definitions. We'll get into more of this as we work through. As stated, the application of the bylaw is for council and council meetings and committee meetings. Regular meetings right now through this bylaw, council meets the second and the fourth Mondays of each month at 3:00 PM. So you have a right to adjust that according to the workings of council. However, the Mondays, it could be a Tuesday, depends on, on a holiday weekend. Organizational meeting, we have to have one of these every year and it's usually around right now in October. So we review almost the same agenda package, your committees, anything else you'd like to, to discuss. But it's just to get organized for the following, following year. Of quorum of council's majority. So in this case, it's four. So to have a meeting, we need to have four individuals, council members attending. It goes into what happens if the mayor or deputy mayor does not show up. I don't need to get into that so much. So special meetings of council, which we just worked on one to get one call, we can do that. As for the MGA, they dictate how we call a special meeting, which we do, we need to inform the public as special meeting is occurring and the nature of the agenda. Electric recording devices, electronic recording devices will be allowed in the council meetings and committee meetings unless specifically disallowed by the chair. All electronic recording devices must remain in the public or gallery viewing area unless specifically allowed to approach the council table by the chair. Mobile telephones, whether in the gallery or council table must be in silent mode while a meeting is being conducted. Just add in the municipal government act allows council members to attend council meetings digitally or virtually. So if you have to be away for some reason, you can attend officially as a counselor. And often within camera, we kind of highlight some of the sensitivities about that, but we've kind of laid the law down that nobody's with you type stuff. So, but you can't attend a meetings electronically as required. I'm a German, often we, we do go past six. Those are the bigger beefier agendas. But it's up to you to decide, should we go past six? And you'd make a motion if you want to go past six, that we extend the meeting past six o'clock through, through a formal resolution. Party is your agenda. That's what you have before you today. There's a list of what your agenda looks like. You can change this according to what, what you think should read, how your agenda should read. But this is why your agenda reads certain ways through this bylaw. Excuse me, you do have a right to switch around your agenda based on the business. And you do that through an engagement led by the mayor. And yeah, you might see something that's best fitting at another location on the agenda. You can move it around based on your, your support to do that. Just on eight point three. So it takes significant work actually to pull your agenda together. So the RFDs, they come, they have to be submitted by one o'clock on Wednesday. Based on circumstance of the week, it may be adjusted a little bit beyond. For example, Thursday where we are away. So come, conversation tomorrow amongst the management will be we need your RFDs and it, excuse me, anything that's coming to council next week for RFDs. We really need to get on to this and have those reports to me by one o'clock on Wednesday. So we can have that agenda done. So we do follow that pretty well to a T. So over Wednesday, Thursday, we complete the agenda and get it to you hopefully by the end of day Thursday. But according to this bylaw, we have to have it to you by the four o'clock on Friday, but Thursday is our target in the day. So then, of course, the electronic copy is sent to you through, through Kara. Now allows you to then review the, the package and post questions if required. So the minutes are retained for life. Those are part, that's one area of our operations. MGA requires us to maintain all minutes of council. Delegations and requests to council, part 10. A person or representative of any delegation or group or persons who wishes to bring a matter to the attention of council or considered by a council shall address the request to the C O, written communication, including name, address, et cetera. So they also provide some level of detail of why they wish to, to speak before council. That's that detail, it would be provided within your package. And just so we have an understanding of what's coming before you for information, perhaps some supporting administrative documentation to help you with that deliberation. But yeah, it's, it's really my role to facilitate that engagement as delegations, delegations before you. Council states, it says 10 minutes, but it's up to you if you wish to have a delegation speak beyond that. Open mic session. So on the agenda is open mic. So citizens that can come in and speak to council generally on open mic. And, and happens on occasion that a citizen may come in just to, to express gratitude or frustration or whatever. So once in a while you will see a citizen or business owner coming in to speak to you. Proceedings at meetings, votes of council, again, administration requires motions to, for action. So simple votes, majority votes, choose direction. Motion is deemed to be defeated if the vote is tied. So if we have six counselors here, a tied vote is defeat. Just a few extra points, form of readings of bylaws. So just, we talked about this briefly on Monday. For your bylaws, one of your tools for decision-making requires three separate and distinct readings. You can have three readings in one meeting, but you, you have to have first reading for, to set the bylaw, second reading, and then consideration for third reading. We can help. I know Mayor Barclay has this down. But if you want to have three distinct readings, you need to have permission to go into the third. So just process, but we can help with that as well. So and then up to the mayor to lead through the, after the first reading is debate and substance of the bylaw. Council has that. After first reading, you can amend the bylaw, but after second reading, it's, you can't so much do that. So if you approve first reading, that's your time to, to make adjustments to it. And the only way you can amend a bylaw is by a bylaw. So it's a, it's a, it's a process. So that's also three readings as well. So it's not an easy process to amend your bylaws. Again, we'll learn that as we move through. So. As for the, the third, sorry, 12.3 addressed to the mayor. So often you hear the word worship or, or mayor or Mr. Madame Chair. That's just formality and a respect to, to the chair. I, I'm not going to get into the proceedings of public hearings. That's for, we'll learn that more as we get into that kind of stuff. Slating down the motions. So you're going to see RFDs. Sometimes council will sway away from 13.1, a motion must be made prior to any debate or vote occurring. So often you make a motion, perhaps it's to the recommendation by our administration or councilman to say, you know what, this one's a little bit different. Can we just discuss this first? But that, again, that's be up to council, to have a council to have that discussion. Again, you don't have to agree with administrative recommendations. It's up to you to seek the information and agree, disagree with it. It's, it's really up to you. Once your decision is made, it's, it's really your decision. We're providing as much professional information as we can to help you with your decisions. Yeah, I think the rest will learn as we go through, through the chair. Just 13.12, just indication council put this in the procedural bylaw, just how do we handle notices of motions? So, a counselor may submit. May contact me at two o'clock on a Wednesday. And I like to have this on the agenda. I'm going to say, no, you missed the one o'clock deadline. And yeah, so if we're already in print and we're already moving towards, it's too late. I'll try to accommodate, but if I can't, you did not make the agenda, but a counselor has a right to provide notice of motion according to this bylaw. The notice of motion will appear on the agenda for the next regular meeting and et cetera. But I can help with, with you. If you have a notice of motion, contact me and I'll help you with that process and what that means. So if you want to talk to me about, I like to have this on the agenda, you contact me in, in advance, you know, around that Wednesday at the latest if you can, and I'll see if I can help you with that conversation with council. So I can advise you according to this bylaw, if you have something you wish to discuss with the rest of council in the formal platform as, as the meeting. So a conduct of council meetings, you see it all there, council conduct. And we're going to get into the code of conduct by law here shortly. So I'll let you read all that information in camera. Again, you can go in camera according to FOP legislation. Committees, this is how the committees are structured. It's through terms of reference, but we're moving into more bylaws for committees right now. Council appoints at least one member and an alternate member as you already did today. So the pressure on you is 16.1F. And we do hear feedback from members at large. If council misses three consecutive meetings, you're subject to be removed from that committee and, and people watch that. So just to, just keep that in mind. If you have to miss, you certainly can do that, but make sure your alternate is in attendance. Committee proceedings is according to the terms of reference or the procedure by law. So into that. So then just going down to schedule A, Kara, just quickly. So one of council primary committees is the agenda and priorities committee, which we meet next Monday at three o'clock. Here's the terms of reference. So, so the AMP meetings are less formal. So we, we're going to throw it to you, strap plans or policies or, or items we need a little bit more direction on. What we do is comes to you when the format of RFDs, the same documents, but really we have to be some caution on the making motions and directives. So number four here, you can make motions only to adopt the agenda, to receive the general reports as information, to refer matters to administration or committee for review, so to give us direction to where this should go, to make recommendations to council. So basically, if you want to make a motion, is I make a motion to regular council or to council to do this action. You cannot give formal direction as per a policy or a program or something formal. You cannot make that decision, but you can advise. You cannot give formal direction as per a policy or a program or something formal, you cannot make that decision, but you can advise it on to council. But you can give direction to administration to to gather more information to work towards conclusion of a policy or a program, and I can help you with that. And that's really it, I won't go into the other committees, but. Thanks for hanging in there, Mayor Council. You don't have to memorize it, that's it's a, you know, chair and C O to help you with that. Management of that bylaw, so thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for CEO Becker on that policy? Counselor Heistad?
I just want to say, Mary Jean, so Mary Jean. Yes, on the conduct of council meetings, I I really do see that when we have guests. I think it's important that we have signage out front of some kinds that individuals, you know, know that, you know. The we take our business very seriously, but at the respect to us as council, it should be the utmost. And that's what I I just wanna.
So they don't walk into in camera meetings and stuff like.
Correct, and I and I've learned from my past bad behavior the last few months, so thanks for setting that straight.
Didn't say any names. Counselor Bates.
I do have one question, it would be for yourself, item 12.3, I've heard. I've heard you address is about three things today, what would you prefer to be?
Mayor is fine, thank you.
Mayor Barkley or Mayor?
Kind of mayor. Worship's a bit regal for me, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, I guess we'll move on to 4.5 then, the code of conduct.
You worship, just to receive that report for information, just for the books, please.
Okay, wasn't true, if you needed that.
I saw moves that we approve 1646, 2020 council procedure by law for information.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harrison, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So the code of conduct by law, as we talked about during your onboarding. Is a requirement of the municipal government acts that was put in place fairly recent. So a lot of municipalities worked over the code of conduct, you know, some have tripped up a little bit on it. Exercise, we certainly, we had our review of the bylaw, the previous council, and we've had some amendments to it, just do the exercise of it. So it's certainly important by law. So again, just to work through it, council, just for for clarity and certainly seek any questions you have. So the whereas. Part of the the bylaw, just why this exists. So definitions, once again, the one of references F O I P investigator. And you'll see it could be internally through council or a external. The purpose and application of this bylaw is to establish standards for the ethical conduct of members relating relating to their roles and obligations as representatives of the town. And a procedure for investigation and enforcement of those standards. It's important to note that council members shall act honestly and in good faith, serve the welfare and interests of the town as a whole. Perform their functions and duties in a conscientious and diligent manner with integrity, accountability and transparency. Conduct themselves in a professional manner with dignity and make every effort to participate diligently in the meetings of council, committees of council and other bodies. And where she are appointed by council, arrange the private affairs and conduct conduct themselves in a matter that promotes public confidence. And will bear close public scrutiny, ensure that conducting a member's private affairs does not damage or have the potential to negatively impact. The reputation of council or the community. As number five reads, a member must not claim to speak on behalf of council unless authorized to do so. And I know this one has been talked about a bit. All council members have a rights and probably obligation to to engage media, you're getting to see, we sought out by media for specific questions. That is totally appropriate, that's not what I believe the intention of this bylaw, it is meaning of. As you deem significant challenge, I use the anti racism rally as a significant. Events within our community and where council members have a right to speak on that event, but the. The collective of council comes through the mayor according to this bylaw. So you, what you decide in your decision making, can he's can be spoke to by each council member. But the official spokesman for the business of council comes through the chair or chair of of the mayor or delegated through. Operationally, it's it'd be myself or that I delegate on to respective management team. So that's, that's a tough one, it does, it's not nice, crisp and clear. But I know media will talk to you and and don't worry about the bylaws so much unless there's a significant issue. Like an emergency events that it should come right directly to the mayor, but each event would be discussed through you, how do we wish to disclose? What is the messaging, who's disclosing that messaging? And according to this bylaw, it reads as the mayor, so just gonna check if that kind of makes sense or. So I'll continue on. So again, official council position is is spoken by the mayor. And ideally, once we get into some media training and social media training. We can figure out how to, how do you disagree publicly as a council member, and that's that's important to figure that out. So you don't lose integrity of council, but but not agreeing, so you have a right to disagree. But how do you speak to that? That's something we need you, I'd recommend you play with that, those kind of conversations and and. And not script so much, but how do you deliver that kind of message and we can help you with that? No member shall make a statement when they know the statement is false, which is 5.4. No member shall make a statement with intent to miss the council members or members of the public. This bylaw applies to all forms of communication as well. So six is important, respecting the decision making process, decision making authority lies with council. And not with any individual member, council may only act by bylaw or resolution passed at a council meeting held in public. At which there is a quorum presence, no member shall, unless authorized by council, attempt to bind the town or give direction. To employees. In administration, agents, contractors, consultants, etc. Members shall conduct and convey council business and their all their duties in an open and transparent manner. Other than for those matters which by 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 law are authorized to do so in camera. Members shall accurately communicate the decisions of council, even if they disagree with council's decision, which is kind of what I referenced. Upholding the law, so. No option, but uphold the law, members shall uphold the law established by the Department of Canada and the legislature of Alberta. And the bylaws, policies, procedures adopted by by council. You can agree with some of those laws and you have an advocacy responsibility within your chairs as council. Members shall respect, I'll just, you can fill the rest of that in. A member must not encourage disobedience of any bylaw, policy or procedure of the town in responding to a member of the public. As it undermines public confidence in the town and the rule of law. A member must not take any action that could provoke or appear to encourage unlawful behavior or urge any member or business to behave unlawfully. A member must not take any action that would could incite or appear to incite resistance to a rebellion against a lawful authority. So section eight outlines respectful interactions with council members, staff and public and others. Again, council shall act in a manner that demonstrates fairness, respect for individual differences and opinions. And an intention to work toward for common good and in further furtherance of the public interest. Members shall treat one another and employees and and others with courtesy, dignity and respect. No member shall use indecent, abusive or insulting words or expressions towards any other member or employee or member of the public. No member shall speak in a matter that is discriminatory to any individual based on the person's race, religious beliefs, color, gender, physical disability. Mental disability, age, ancestry, place of origin, marital status, source of income, family status or sexual orientation. Members shall respect the fact that employees in administration work for the town as a corporate body and are charged with making. Recommendations that reflect their professional expertise and a corporate risk perspective. And that employees are required to do so without undue influence from any member or group of members. Members must note, must not, sorry, involve themselves in matters of administration which fall under the jurisdiction of the C O. Members must not use or attempt to use their authority to influence for the purpose of intimidating, threatening, coercing, commanding. Or influencing any employee of the town with the intent of interfering in employees duties. Or maliciously or falsely injure the professional or ethical reputation. Or the prospects of practice employees of the town. Section nine outlines confidential information, which council and 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 administration. Members must keep in confidence matters discussed in private at a council or council committee meetings until the matter is discussed at a meeting held in public. No member shall use confidential information for personal benefit or for the benefit of any other individual organization. In the course of duties, while you're in camera, members must not disclose or release by any means. Any member of the public, including the media, confidential information acquired. By virtue of their office, so basically, anything that goes in camera stays in camera, it does not come, does not leave the chambers. So confident, sorry, confidential information includes the information such things as security of the property of the town. Lands, land deals, land negotiations, contract negotiations, employment and labor challenges or relations. Draft documents or legal instruments, law enforcement matters, litigation matters. And advice subject to solicitors' client privilege. You're gonna hear more through your training council on conflicts of interest and pecuniary interest. So I won't belabor that one so much, you're gonna hear more of that. And you did hear a little bit of that on on last Thursday. And property use of influence, no member shall use the influence of the members office for any purpose other than that to. Exercise that of council's official duties. Et cetera, et cetera. Council, section 12, use municipal assets and services. So members shall use municipal property, equipment, services, supplies and staff resources only for performance of their duties as a member. And and you can go through A and and B, so obviously, the you received your your computers today, so that is town resources. Emails are, that's town corporate business, so some caution there. And that's all flappable, so so everything that you do for town business, just be aware of that. When you respond to tell business that is, that is, that's town property. Section 13, orientation, other training attendants, so administration must provide you ability to attend training orientation. Within 90 days after the member takes the oath of office, your training on Thursday would account for that. Certainly strongly encourage you to attend the MUNIS 101 training in Three Hills in November. Can't remember the dates, but both are really good training opportunities for you. And other training occurs as you as you direct us to to coordinate for you. Remuneration and expenses, your stewards of the public resources, resources and shall avoid waste, abuse and extravagance. Members shall be transparent and accountable with respect to all your expenditures, etc. Gifts and hospitality, members shall not accept gifts, hospitality or other benefits that would be to a reasonable member of, that would. To a reasonable member of the public appear to be gratitude for influence, so some caution there. That may induce influence or otherwise go beyond the necessary appropriate public functions involved. So if you do our approach for take it to Hawaii, you might want to ask me if that's appropriate. You know, you may receive like a mug or at go calendar, that certainly ties into your business. But if you're uncertain, if you receive some, just you can ask. And I can advise with a recommendation, but I don't think we really hit up on on G S O's, those days are come and gone, I think. The election campaigns, I don't think we need to get into that right now, informal complaint process, right? We're gonna come back to you in near future on our complaint policy, the most efficient way to handle public complaints directly right through you. Yes, to if you can send them to the town office, depends on what level of complaint it is, or or phone me, what do I do with this public complaint? Actually, this is not what this is covering, actually, that's right, that's a different policy. The informal complaint process is actually, there's a breach of code of conduct, sorry. So you may receive an informal complaints, there's a process online, and what do we do when you receive a challenge on the code of conduct? So this tells you what what we would do or you would do as council on to initiate and discuss an informal complaint. Based on public or even internally amongst yourselves on conduct, you can file informal complaints. On each other if you deem that appropriate. Formal complaint process, again, there's this how how that is handled. So you can read that over. And compliance and enforcement. Yeah, I won't go through that unless you want me to. Again, this bylaw was updated March 22 of 2021, and that's my report, Mayor Berkeley.
Thank you, CEO Becker, does anybody have any questions about code of conduct? Okay, I will ask for somebody to make a motion, then please that we accept this for information.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Mares, all in favor? Thank you. Next, we will go to 5.1 with respect to budget deliberations, and I'll call on Director Vickers, please.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. So each year, when we do the budget process, we bring back forth and do budget deliberations with council. This normally takes upwards of two to three days of of all day budget deliberations. We would like to discuss with you the 2022 budget deliberations that we. We currently have slated for November 23rd to 25th of this year, and we would like your input. We do have a recommended motion, like I said, that council approves the recommended November 23rd to 25th budget deliberation dates as presented. But we're just looking for your input, so we can get those dates booked.
Director Baker sets typically from nine to four.
That's correct, it's normally an all day process, normally the first day would be like operational, then the second day we would get into, say, capital and maybe some delegations. Like the library would come and do their presentation as well, and then the third day we could get into. Just back back into some detail or or anything that you guys desire.
So does that work for everyone? This week, we can be flexible and change things if we need to, Counselor Heistad?
Yeah, I I just want to be clear, I think that, and I apologize, Erica. The 23rd, you guys referring to an evening meeting, I think we were talking, or is it just two full days?
Not three full days.
It would be three.
Three full days, yeah, the 23rd, I may have some stuff that I have to stick candle through. So just so you're aware.
So would you like to try like a week later, is that what you're suggesting?
No, I I think we should stick with it, honestly, I think that it gets heavier for me with work the following week, so we can stick with this, I can. I can work with it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We could even potentially do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if that works better.
Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would.
So that would be then the 24th, 25th, 26th?
Yeah.
We'll just give everybody.
If that works, if that works for everybody, if not, just I would say roll with it.
We'll just let everyone check their their calendars and. See how that works. Just wait for some others to check their calendars here. That work, that works for everybody? All right, I will then have someone. Make a motion, please, that budget deliberations will take place November. twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six.
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wing. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So we'll move into correspondence and information next. So if you see anything on here that do you have any questions about, please don't hesitate to ask. So I think we're all booked into A U M A for convention and everybody's going. Some minutes from the public library that was from back in June, I believe. I think you can just keep scrolling, Kara. Thank you. Just take note of this last one that Kara's scrolling through. Somebody had a, and I think that is something that we can look at it at budget time if if maybe. Will we, actually, on that one, Kara or C E O Becker, will we send a letter back to the residents to thank them for their correspondence and?
If that's counsel's desire, Mayor Barkley.
Okay, would you like a motion for that or or you just do it?
I think we can.
I think it would be nice just to acknowledge that we've received it and, yeah, thank you.
So I did let her know that I received okay, that her email, and she did provide approval and consent for me to place it in the information package. I will just follow up.
Yeah, yeah, I actually saw that now that you mentioned it. I remember, yes.
So Mayor Barkley, just you see something like Cape. What happens now that you've got appointed your committees? We do follow up letters for your external committees. So we provide them immediate notice. So whoever's appointed to Cape, I can't recall. There's already information waiting for that that representative. So we'll we'll bridge that communication for you. That goes with other committees, whether it's the library board, we we bridge that communication for you as well.
Okay, thank you. So I think that's it for correspondence. Can we just have a motion to accept the correspondence's information, please?
Mayor Barkley, I salute.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham. All in favor? Thank you. And we're just going to do whole council reports will be a little bit different this time since everyone's new here, but maybe, you know, give us how you're feeling. And I know we've got some activities happening this week, so we'll start with Counselor Highstead.
Nothing major, but it's nice to be back and thanks. And I'm looking forward to the term. So I know there's, I think there's something Karen wanted us to to do something on the nineteenth of November. That's what the last thing I remember, period. So and I and I was hoping that Mark brought dilly bars or something. That's not a we're allowed to get that, right? That's not a gift. It's so and Johnny, Johnny, I'm not talking to you ever again. So there you go. Thanks.
Counselor Harrison. Thank you, Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a couple, couple things. Again, I'm very happy to be a colleague of of council here. So I'm looking forward to the next four years with with council and also with administration. I think there's some very exciting things that are on the horizon here and sort of looking forward to getting those into into fruition. I do have an age friendly committee meeting on Wednesday at one P M. And I see Counselor Highstead is now the the main person. So I I planned on attending. So if you feel that if you have the time, it's here. So it's it's a great committee. So we can just be here at the office at one P M. I guess a question around transportation to our training to A U M A. We all take your own vehicles or do we take the town vehicle or?
Mayor Barkley, the Counselor Harrison, yeah, we can coordinate typically try to make use of the town vehicle. Sometimes it's not always available. Then we coordinate carpooling. For example, Thursday, we can certainly discuss now or later. I think the car is booked and then we can figure out who's who's traveling logistics. But yeah, we certainly try to coordinate for effective use of resources and carpool when when we can.
Yeah, yeah, that's about all I have. We're training this week. We're going to Delburn. And it's going to be a busy month in November. So, yeah, that's all I had, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, and Counselor Mares.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Well, I'm excited with everybody else to be serving on this council. I spent most of, well, since we got our agendas on Friday, I spent most of the weekend trying to familiarize myself with the technology and the bylaws and looking forward to the session on Thursday. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Oh, my gosh, where to start? Just kidding. I tend to be a little long winded, so I'll keep it short. I, as everyone else has mentioned, just very excited to be working with everyone, the administration, worship, fellow counselors. There is a lot to absorb. But my gosh, I think as a group that we're going to do very well as a council, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I don't have anything really to add other than how excited I am as well. I'm honored to be here with all of you. Certainly, this is a great opportunity, I think, for all of us to work together to move in a spell forward into the future past COVID and onto really good things. So yeah, we've got lots of work to do, but I think we're the group to get it done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and Counselor Bates.
Yeah, just happy to be here and again, and join the new group. I've spent the last week doing mostly things that I put off while I was campaigning. And I did watch a U eighteen hockey game on the weekend and thanks through Director Jenkins to Trish for rehanging the the mesh in the last, I don't know, eight, nine months that the arena was down, but now you can actually see. Looking forward to Thursday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And of course, I'm very excited to to be here as well and really looking forward to to working with this wonderful group of people and our administration team. Did have a couple of meetings with C E O Becker this week and brought up a couple of things that I kind of like to get moving forward if possible. One would be a review of the procurement policy. So I would like us to review that and the procurement is somewhat guided by trade agreements, but I would like for us as an organization to see how we can evaluate that and potentially have more business, particularly on larger projects, staying in our community here with our local business community. I always think of Howells as an example on the Diamond Seven. They weren't quite the lowest bid, but they were awarded the contract and, you know, and we know that when it stays local, there's more local hiring, that money is circulating in our community as opposed to somebody else's community. And I'd even, you know, potentially, maybe we can unbundle some of those are requests for proposals from large contracts where some of that work can be done in our community. The other thing kind of going along with that is education for the community, business community with the Alberta Purchasing Connection site. So anything over seventy five thousand dollars that is sent out to tender. That is where it would sit. So if our local business people are not aware of the Alberta Connection Purchasing Connection site, they're probably missing out on a lot of things. Something that comes to mind would have been Autumn Grove as an example. I know there is one bid for on the appliances out of Red Deer, but I doubt if our our local business was even on on that site at the time. So there's probably lots of opportunities there for people and and how we would go about or administration go about getting that education out there. I'm not sure, but certainly be something that I would be very hopeful that we could do. And the last thing would be the industrial land. So we talked a little bit and certainly on last council, we have sixtyish acres tied up of industrial land. There's a clause in the contract and the Canada Grant contract that we cannot release that land until five years from completion date. I don't think we're quite there yet. Are we, Director Kennedy? So let's say that happened this fall. We're still five years away from even being able to sell that land. And we have done some advocacy in in the past on last council towards this, but I would like to get very serious about it. And I'm not sure where we go. You know, it's kind of a federal provincial committee, but it seems, you know, all levels of government want economic progress and development and diversification. And and we're sitting on sixty acres that we can't do anything with, and it's very, very frustrating. So I'm hoping that we can kind of move down that road as well. So I'm not sure, C E O Becker, if you need motions on this kind of thing or kind of take it under advisement, we can come back at the next meeting and and make it a little bit more formal, but.
Of that, Mayor Barkley, just to direct administration to bring back information regarding procurement policy, which does include the Alberta Purchasing Connection. So it's covered. And then also information regarding the lagoon land development.
Okay, well, I will make that motion and thank you. And any questions about any of that? All in favor? And then I guess this week, of course, we have a special council meeting tomorrow and George Cuff training on Thursday, and hopefully some of us will come and look at the ban on Friday. And so thank you. So we'll just go through our administration team now to see if anybody has any updates. So Director Kennedy.
This is always where Todd gets nervous.
I know. I saw the look.
Nothing much to update. Obviously, we're wrapping up on all of our projects. So Thirty Seventh Street, the latest, it's paved, completely paved. Wrapping that project up here the next week. So that does pretty much finalize all of our capital projects for this year. So I believe next week I'll come back to you with a bit of an overview and an update on how those projects went, where where we were sitting, how much money we spent, and how much more I'll be looking for.
Okay, thank you, Director Vickers.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I'm just congratulations again for for all sitting here today. So that's good. I don't have much, just budget deliberations internally are starting. All the different staff members are required to get in their paperwork to me by the end of this week and some next week. And then for the next couple of weeks, I'll be deep, deep in coordinating the budget paperwork for you. So
Director Jenkins.
I'm just a comment. So on your upcoming events, there I'm not sure which one of you got appointed to Municipal Planning Commission, but there won't be a meeting tomorrow. There's no items for that that agenda, but there will be one for next week, November second. There will be Halloween events at the pool and the skate park on Saturday. And as Counselor Highstead mentioned, we are in the the early stages of planning a an event for November nineteenth that will coincide with the lighting of the Christmas tree as well as this family festival and the kickoff of the Festival of Trees.
Busy time of year. And Ken, do you have anything? Thank you for all your hard work today and getting this set up. Okay. Thank you, and Kara, thank you for all your hard work setting things up for today. And do you have anything you'd like to add or?
Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and C E O Becker. Nothing, you're good. Okay. So we now have, we'll ask if open mic session, is there anybody in the gallery that would like to say anything? So to know? Would you like to come? Would you like to come forward? So, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for those words, Mark. We appreciate it. And media, do you have anything to say? No. Okay, thank you. Kara, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to say anything?
What I will do now is I'll unzoom or unmute the participants in Zoom and leave it open if anybody has anything to say.
If you do, just please put your hand up. Kara can address you. Nothing.
I've asked all members to unmute themselves. Ron Guest has unmuted himself. A message from, oh, go ahead, Ron.
I'm sitting on my iPad, so I don't have my camera. I'd just like to congratulate Mayor Jean and all the new members of the council. And I think we are looking forward to a very challenging four years to maintain the and build the health of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Pat and Richard have unmuted themselves. Go ahead.
I just want to congratulate the council, and I'm excited and energized as to this new council. So congrats, everyone.
Thank you, Pat, and how's the weather in Saint Lucia?
Very nice. I don't have my camera on because I'm
as you're in the Okay, thank you very much. Nice to hear your voice. Go ahead, Bill Hoppins.
Yes, I'd like to add my congratulations to everybody. It was very challenging situation, and I congratulate you on your selection by the voters. I would like to put a plug in that as I see you getting a tsunami of information and things to do, not to lose sight of the strategic planning process. I know you've got budgeting lined up, and that's good, but the budgeting needs to be stopped tied and integrated with the strategic planning, because that's where you identify your priorities and set your focus. So I would encourage you to keep that in the forefront in the next ninety days so that that gets done and you just don't get swamped by ongoing things. It'll always be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. And I believe strategic planning has been set for January. Has it? Do we have dates or not? Not quite.
Oh, you were
It's okay, call me whatever.
February the fourteenth. Fifteen, sixteenth is what we.
Sorry, February?
February fifteen, sixteen.
February?
Yes.
Sorry, it is when I spoke with Logan, it's February fourteenth and fifteenth.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll just review upcoming events. And maybe to start with, Kara, I know it's a little bit more work for you, of course, because that's what we're here for, to give you too much work. I'm wondering if maybe we could just plug in times for the first little while. Next to those, just for new council members, not quite sure when meetings are and stuff and. Maybe some of the committees will change meeting times, but. Anybody have any questions about any of these upcoming events?
Okay. I have a question here.
Yes.
To Kara. Do all of the committee meetings get put on here, kind of one week in advance or? So what I do is I plug in all the meetings that are coming up. And then for a two week period, and then I will. Renew after November eighth for what's coming up for the next two weeks. Okay. And would it be possible to put an address on here or?
Now you got me all flustered. I'm not supposed to call you. To councillor Mizaros. What the address will come right on the agenda. So so once, so now the committees that you reside to, you'll get agenda packages. And the addresses and where they are at and what time will be situated right on the agenda.
I also think most often there'll be a calendar invite that comes out. For each committee meeting too, where you can accept or decline. So it'll go right into your calendar as well. Councillor Bates?
Yes, Mayor Barkley, I was just going to say maybe Kara could check with Vanessa because some of the committees are on a regular. Like I think Historical Society has the first Wednesday, the. I know the municipal user group is a. Third Thursday of the odd month, you know, that so there's some patterns there that you could probably get out to the respective people that are on the committees. Give them a little bit of. Warning way ahead of time.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Vanessa's back. Do we finish up? What do we do, Todd? Like, do we recess out of the other meeting, the org, the org meeting? Okay. Yeah, okay, Kate, great. So Vanessa, I guess if you want to get the packages to each of us and. We can just take a little bit of time here to review them and then we will. Sorry. Okay. Okay, so we need a first of all, a motion to recess this council meeting. From someone.
Also move.
Thank you, councillor Bates. All in favor? Thank you. And now we will, do we need any motion to go into back to the other meeting or? Okay, so I also asked for a motion to reconvene to the organizational meeting, please. Thank you. All in favor? Okay. And Vanessa, I think we're ready for you now. So just for anyone who wasn't. Listening prior, this is for the police and safe community committee, community committee meeting. And we're just, there were six applications, I believe. So we just need to review them and then we'll do our votes and go from there. Thank you.
Mayor Barkley, I have one other request if we could. While we're doing this, perhaps Vanessa could get the other. Committees and then just read off the names of the successful candidates because there were some multiples. And we didn't exactly go through each one. We just, you know, we knew that there would be one more needed. And it might be useful to know. What other, what other people have already got their names on some of the committees that if they were multiples. Okay, thank you.
So previously you have approved Danny Reberger on the Transportation Committee. On Subdivision and Development Appeal Board.
It's looking for all the people on the committee. Like, so we know who's. Because there's, there's multiple applications. I'm not sure if I'm being clear. With, if it's a problem, but I'd like to hear the names of all the people on. The Transportation Committee that.
Councillor Bates.
Maybe what we can do is maybe that could come out in an email. Or something because you probably don't have that in front of you right now. Do you, Vanessa? Like the names of every committee?
No.
No, I didn't think so. So I think you could send that out in an email.
It might have affected how I vote.
Sorry.
It might have affected how I'd vote if I already have, if I already know that somebody's on two other three other committees.
What I believe we made. We have that calculated already, right? And we already made motions on all of them except for this committee. So you're looking for the ones, councillor Bates, on the ones that you've ordered on already?
No, we were only voting on like if there was one person like Danny Reberger. It doesn't mean that there wouldn't be. Somebody else on two other committees that we're now deciding if they're going to be on the third committee.
For this respective committee, councillor Bates, I only recognize Ron King as a potential duplicate. I don't see anybody else that's been assigned to a committee at this point.
And is Ron on one or?
Ron is on two MPC and FCS.
That answers my question. If he's the only other one that's on another committee.
Okay, we had all six pieces of paper. And I have to do it again. Had six pieces of paper. We're only supposed to vote for five.
Yeah, so who? Sorry, I thought everybody knew that, but okay, we'll start again.
So reporting for the five members that you want on the committee.
Yes. So we only need five pieces of paper. Could we get six people?
They did that one already.
Yeah, I didn't get a comment.
Okay. So you have voted for Arnold Glover, Sue Haddu. Brandy Loughlin, Joy Milney and Bob Scult.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. Could we please have a motion to accept those five members onto the Police and Safe Community Committee?
I'd so move, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, councillor Harrison. All in favor? Thank you.
Barkley, do we need a motion to destroy the ballot? I'd so move that we destroy the ballot.
Thank you all in favor. Okay, so we'll move in camera.
Adjourn the.
Oh, yeah, we're back in that meeting, aren't we? Yes, so. Going back and forth, yes. Okay, so I'll ask for somebody to adjourn the organizational meeting, please, in absence of councillor Reberger.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you, councillor Heistad. All in favor? And then last for a motion to reconvene the regular council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, councillor Mizaros. All in favor? And then I will ask for a motion that we move in camera in our regular council, out of our regular council meeting. Thank you, councillor Dunham. All in favor? Thank you. And we'll take a maybe a five minute break. If anybody wants to stretch, stretch their legs or. Do others need?